Yeah, it's, can I take a look at that real quick?
It's a list of names.
Yeah, a list of names and taking Prince it off and putting Ashley Gott on there.
And so you're saying to the...
So I actually can view the data.
Right.
If we need him to view data or any change.
And you're saying to do, to do it in two separate, as far as the...
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's right, yeah. Okay, that works.
Then I'll make the motion, then we approve the document, descend into the Department of Labor taking Prince Benable's name off and putting Ashley Gott's name on it.
Second. Jim Marlowe for Gentry on Ellis.
Yeah. And the second part is given when did the authority descend as far as the data. I'm going to make that motion.
Second.
Jim Marlowe for Gentry on Ellis.
Yeah.
All right. We have the acceptance, we have the audit that was done for the Public Defender's Office that was done by the Presses Meyer. We need to accept the audit that was done for that, on that work for the public defender.
A man's question, friend, one is, we clearly know what this is all about, but, but if they're still... Once that's done, I mean, it's like any other audit, I guess they don't have to go by it. I mean, just like they did the audit on us or you or, it's just a, you know, suggestion, but... Well, on this particular case, what happens is they don't, they don't provide some, to make things better.
Well, I think there's a host of issues that can happen. For one, I mean, like you just, you brought up a good example. You know, we had some of the audit findings before with the Circuit Clerk's office, what was that, four years ago? Or so many years ago. Angie complied with all those, but if she didn't, I mean, really, there's no legal action or thing to be taken. Almost becomes more of a political question, or in the case of someone's...
Oh, the opposite.
You know, right, a performance type issue.
This is going to be a public document.
Right.
So we might as well just talk about this right now. I mean, we've all read this and everything, but...
Yeah, that's why Frank died, read thoroughly.
I mean...
Well, we got some major problems here.
Yeah.
Go through 136. I'm still not convinced that they're keeping track of compensated time on it.
I don't, I don't want guarantees.
I say, this is what I'd like to do, if you guys agree with this. I'd like to, you know, I agree. We're just approving the audit. This is just important.
Yeah, my question probably would have been.
But I think it's good that let's talk about this on public record and get this out. I said, you know, step number one, the examination of timekeeping and compensated absence records for the Williamson County Public Defender's Office for completeness and accuracy in here's the finding. Public Defender's Office did not maintain adequate records for timekeeping and compensated absences. Few employees had sticky notes, calendar notations, and/or text messages from other employees as evidence for using compensated absences. Payroll submission from the Williamson County Public Defender's Office to the Williamson County Treasurer's Office did not contain adequate information regarding hours worked and compensated absence that is updating for the testing or reconciliation. As a result of the limited information available, the completeness and accuracy of the compensated absence could not be tested, reconciled, or verified. Step number two, we're seeing any timekeeping and compensated absence balances reported by Williamson County Public Defender's Office to either Williamson County War Department or submitted through the audit process during the time period, December 1st, 2016 to November 15, 2018. Finding, we examine the timekeeping and compensated absences reported by Williamson County Public Defender's while balances as of fiscal year end were reported. Records were not sufficient to either test or support the balances reported. Number three. Number three's procedure was we'll reconcile timekeeping and compensated absence records through reported compensated absence balances from December 1st, 2016 to November 15, 2018. Finding, the PD's office did not maintain adequate records of timekeeping and compensated absences. Payroll submissions from the Williamson County Public Defender's Office to the Williamson County Treasurer's Office did not contain adequate information regarding hours worked and compensated absence that facilitate any further testing or reconciliation. Therefore, a reconciliation of the timekeeping and compensated absence balances for the time period, once again, December 1st, 2016 to November 15, 2018, could not be performed. Number four, interview all staff members of the Public Defender's Office and inquire of any known reporting irregularities or concerns noted in timekeeping and compensated absence tracking, practice policies, and reporting in Williamson County Public Defender's Office. Finding, there are inquiries resulted in two Public Defender Office employees reporting irregularities and inconsistencies with other staff members. Use of compensated absence as well as report, as reports of inadequate record keeping for timekeeping and tracking of compensated absences in the Williamson County Public Defender's Office. All the other employees interviewed also reported insufficient record keeping for the timekeeping and compensated absences. Number five, the procedure was we will interview, we will review internal controls in ways over timekeeping and compensated absence tracking and reporting in the, at the Williamson County Public Defender's Office. Finding, upon inquiry and observation, there were no internal controls over timekeeping and compensated absences tracking or reported that were placed. Then number six, last one, we will make inquiries of other county employees, officials, and departments of any known departures from the policies and procedures of Williamson County Government and generally accepted accounting principles in the Williamson County Public Defender's Office. Finding on inquiry of the Williamson County Treasurer's Office, it was determined that the Williamson County Public Defender's Office had not submitted the requested payroll information, reporting the hours worked, compensated absences, and when they were used when submitting its bi-weekly payroll information. Well, so, in a nutshell. Wouldn't take long to wrap that up, would it?
No.
Well, the problem we have, we talked about this before. There literally is not one person in that department that is responsible for keeping track of the time off when they're there, when they're not there, and they don't use it, they don't utilize a time clock. There literally is no accounting, keeping track, whatever you want to call it, when they come, when they go, what they do, when they're there. And the answer that we were given, that I was given, is totally unacceptable in the fact that, well, they're adults, they need to keep track of it. No, every department, and we've had, I've had a discussion with them about this personally. And at this moment, there is still nobody keeping track of this. And, you know, I don't know, it's not an elected position, it's an appointed position, but it's appointed by the chief judge.
My comment to this, this is a very, very thorough reading here on this, what she's written up. I'd say make a copy of this and make sure Judge Blyer has it on because this department is not elected and he, they oversee, just oversee this department. He needs to be very well aware of this, and I'll be glad to walk it over to him or whatever, but Judge Blyer needs it in his hands. And if things start happening, he needs back in pain.
Has, has the, has anyone from the department addressed this report with the board yet?
No, not officially.
Okay.
It's been discussed, and that's how come I know that there's nothing changed.
Right. Even during budget time, I recall, an instance where it was brought up and they said, you know, vacation time, sick time, comp time was different. Should take whatever time they want, you know.
So basically, it's just a free-for-all.
Well, and the problem, Jim's, Jim's dead on target. I mean, that literally is what was said.
And they had no...
And the problem we have with this is when somebody's taking time off for an extended period of time, they have surgery or whatever, you know, it's, then it comes down to they can literally do whatever they want because there is no accountability for this.
Now, we do need to make the policies concerning this, but this is the board's role in this whole thing. And other than that, the enforcement, like Prince says, on all of our, on a lot of our policies lack the authority to enforce it, and it's up to the department head to enforce it.
You know, just on to me, I have to see Brad this week on another deal? I'd be happy to take over with anything.
I guess I'm not that talking about. Well, on that note...
As long as you know, so it happens.
I will make the recommendation that we approve the audit for audit needs of the Public Defender's.
Okay.
Jim Marlowe for Gentry on Ellis.
I will also talk to, it doesn't hurt to have multiple people talk to us about this because this is a serious situation and, you know...
I didn't mean in reference, Judge Blyer was not the one that appointed.
No, 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 I get it.
So he got involved in this and he may not be aware.
That's right, but the book's not there, so I wouldn't have to...
He assumed the responsibility. All right. The, we need to discuss the, with the change of the Treasurer's Office. We're required to have an exit audit. It's always a good thing to do that anyway, so we need to...
That, that actually is good for both people. I mean, that's good for Rensen and it's good for the new person coming in because...
Both, both ways.
But, you know, because that way protects both of them. I remember talking to a person that was elected to Circuit Clerk in a different county. He called me and said something, like in 2016, I said, I wouldn't sit with an officer unless I do. There's an exit audit being done, kind of find out, there's all kinds of stuff going on in another county. It just protects, it just protects you. And, but, you know, Ashley's gone this week, so I don't know how far, I don't know what level, which would be, what, getting on engagement letter, how about this, or...
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote on this right now.
Yeah, I think, I think kind of put it on pause until Ashley can have a little more time to do it. I mean, all they can do is go on contingency, but I mean, if you contend it to what, we don't know what kind of level. Are all ex-odds the same?
Yeah, they won't. The, the only thing I would, the, it doesn't matter whether he's here or not at this time because the, the engagement would have to, they'd have to come in. The process for doing the audit is the auditor who is doing the work, they come in, they have to have a plan. They have to prepare a plan, it's very detailed, and that takes a couple of weeks to do. That just doesn't happen overnight. And then they perform the audit, start to finish. You're probably talking two months of a period of time. And I'm, I'm going to go back to, you know, we have to do this.
Yeah, me and I, I agree. We have to, I just think right now this is...
But I think that what we need to do too is, I still think we need to open it up a bit and have a bit, have a bit. So when we do this, so we're in agreement to take it for right now.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah. Isn't he, is that curious, he's gone, split the class or something?
Yes, he's at a conference.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right.
So, time for bid.
Do you want to wait for anything else, Greg?
Yeah. Actually, we'll go ahead and do the accepted reports. So, we'll do that, right?
Okay, well, okay.
Go, go, go.
I'm going to accept the reports of the County Clerk Bees account that was revised January 2019 to February 2019. The County Clerk Real Estate Trust, February 2019. The County Clerk Mobile Home Trust, February 2019. The County Clerk Idaho Records Fund, February 2019. And the Williamson County General Trust Fund Cash Balance as of February 2018, 2019.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Gray, you want to, you got the main subdivision?
Yeah, that's all I've got on the, on the... For the meeting today, it's an 11 lot subdivision. The developer is Carlos Tanner, he's, it's out off of Oakville Springs Road. It's the corner of that road and Cherry Valley Road. It's got a thousand and fifty-two feet of new road within the subdivision, the flats down here. It's been reviewed by the American Department, Jeff's office, and the taxes are turned on it. He's posted both his construction and maintenance letters of credit with us, so he's been there. And it's been approved by Bar County Health. I think everything's ready to go on it. I know, I know him personally, he's done a number of subdivisions with us. He's, he's pretty good at a lot of his business, so I think, just need to make a motion to give it approved and then I'll make that motion.
Second.
Jim Marlowe for Gentry on Ellis.
That's all I've got, unless you guys have any questions.
I, I've got something.
Yeah.
We talked about the, about the email received from the individual. In a nutshell, I've not responded, I did through the body of email and everything, but I can't go forward. There won't be from now on all the emails that I get. But one thing I wanted to bring out, we had a meeting a while back with Brian Saper. And I don't know how long ago that meeting was, I remember we discussed the subdivision.
Easton Town or, Easton Kirk, Weston Kirk.
Do you remember when we did that?
That was probably three months ago.
Yeah, it's been a couple of months. Well, we just said, we said that when we left that meeting, that we formed a committee to revisit the subdivision, just take a look at it, see if it needs any updating or anything. And I'm going to go ahead and, it's our two guys, and I had, the people I had in mind was Greg, Jeff, Wendy. I get Jim Webb because we needed someone from whenever the subdivision ordinance was first developed. Give us maybe a history of why certain things are in there. We got, I thought, invite Brian and then a member of the board, you know, if you don't care. I'd like to sit in on that. And then we just...
A lot of them are good.
Yeah. And then, if that's, if that's okay, you think that's a good group.
That's a strong thing.
And then that way we can just, I'll call everybody, I already talked, discussed this with Jeff, he's on board. I'm sure Wendy would be on board. And then say by sometime next month, maybe seven to eight, we'll just take a look at it, you know. I don't know how long it would take to look at it. That way we can get, we can see Brian's concern was...
Yeah, one thing you might do, yeah, exactly. Brian, you may send out something or talk here, make sure they bring in their thoughts that day.
Yeah, right.
And not, not if I had to tell them to, while they're sitting there in a bureau.
In the letter that, that I discussed with you the other day, one of the questions was asked, what have we ever done to the subdivision ordinance? Well, you know, nothing really because it was fine the way it was set up.
Yeah, in recent times, it hasn't been tweaked, but all right, when, from when it was first established to now, I think it's, it's tweaked a time or two.
Yeah, so it may just be time to look at it and maybe clarify any language or, you know, get any faithness out of it.
Well, and what, what he's referring to, we got a subdivision that off of Hudson's Road. The developer came in and wanted to build just part of the road, and we said, that's fine because he just wanted to build some homes. And before we even got to that part, he, we told him we got to put up some bonds for the construction and maintenance. He didn't realize that. So we went to a whole round of that. So finally, then he wanted to chip it, get it built, and chip it immediately. And we cautioned him about that because when you build homes, you're hauling material in there and it tears the road up. And I, and we weren't going to... And I, and we weren't going to accept it till the whole road was built, it hasn't called a second year. So he did that, and he did the second stage, same thing. And the year of maintenance, after he finished the road and the year of maintenance went by, last year it had issues with the road, there was age failures, dishes were silted, there was roads, there was a number of things. Said, it was late in the season, said, extend your maintenance bond another year. And then this summer, in my team, you can do, do what needs to be done, and then we'll take it over. So May or April 1st this week, I thought I was doing a good thing, I sent him an email and said, hey, it's April, construction season's starting, we've got some issues out there, you need to be impressed, you know, before we take over. And he shot an email back, said, can you give me an ad on this listing? Perhaps maybe you guys. So I went out and looked at it thoroughly, I tried to be as thorough as I could, and gave him the listing. And that set off, he didn't like the listing, thought I was being harsh. Yeah.
Because he didn't get what he wanted, and they get the answers, and that's fine.
So that's, that's what this is about, so. And, but that kind of goes back to what Jim was talking about, you know, that issue of not, you haven't done that still out there, so. But that's a little background.
But, but the point that I was wanting to bring up, we, we said, we left that one meeting with Brian, we'd set up a committee and review it, we never have. So I think it's time, and I'll go ahead and.
But he brought us some good points about some things we need to be looked at.
And so if I can, you know, maybe next month if I agree on the date.
I'm sure most of the people know this stuff inside and out, you know, but it would be good to have your ideas written out, ready to go if we're not going to.
Yeah, and hopefully, Bri, and Brian's pretty good, he'll get with, you know, John Crawford. Get all of their thoughts together, then you can.
That's another one. On, on this committee, how many does that, about five, six, five or six? Okay, so we need another developer in, or not? Because my fear is developers are going to say, you know, no, I don't like that, I don't like this. Or whatever, and that's all we want to get out of it though.
They see the only, the only, yeah, the only thing about developer, you, every developer got their own pains.
Yeah.
And who would you pick, one, this developer, John Doe here, would say, I don't like it, just, I like that. And it, it, you get too many of those people in the room, you.
Yeah, that's just.
It's just, I think, I don't think, they're not going to tell what to do with this company, or anything, so. Personally, I think you create horns and that bring one, but I know why you'd want this, but you're going to get all these different.
Yeah, because that's what I was.
You know, and.
Even if you're doing it to show that your findings or have credibility, but then Brent, like Brent said, well, that guy, that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, you know, rat's money out and buy your horse.
Right, okay, all right.
You can be a babysitter.
Actually, who's having years?
Yeah.
Colonel?
The Colonel will be here. He's okay, he, he's okay with it, Colonel?
Uh, I haven't asked him yet, I'm sure he would, will be. And didn't want to have a legal, want to have a job.
Just put the fried chicken out in the beer. The Colonel. So it comes Colonel for a lot of fries. Colonel Sanders. Real quick, may I just take care of the sale of the owner, make a motion that we accept the sale of the owner, Kevin J. Ferguson, oh, one, two, two, four, eight, six, zero, zero, one. I'll play.
Jim Marlowe?
Yeah.
For Gentry?
Yeah.
Ron Ellis?
Yeah. All right. Let's get down, and you guys, we talked about a month ago, and they, about taking a look at redoing the bonds.
Yes.
So, we had that, we, we looked at that a couple of years ago. It'll be interesting to see what really transpires with that. But being in the state of Illinois and having to pay a premium just because we're in the state of Illinois is sad.
What bonds are we talking about?
The, the geo-bonds, they think that they can save us money on, on that, which.
Ah, okay. Great lot of that, I think we've got a lot, a lot of the same, I think, well, it was done really.
So, that's it. Come on, if you don't mind, come up to us, so that way it's on the.
Standing on the vocal mix.
Oh, is that? I see it.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you guys, are you guys still, you say still Bernardi Securities, I've, I've got some stuff with you. Or do you still, is it still Bernardi Securities?
Yeah.
Or you merged somebody or something? Seems like my portfolio thing has got something, something changed on it, nothing with that.
Uh, well, we do have a portfolio management side, which is Bernardi Asset Management.
And I'll do what it says. I get, I get things, you know, from them.
So that's more of the investment side, that might be why.
Bring your portfolio in, we can discuss.
Yeah. You want my portfolio, but they got it, so.
Um, but yes, we're a bond underwriter, we're headquartered in Chicago. Kevin Wills is out of our Old Fallon office, so that's terribly smart from here. We also have an office group, Bob Dale, I had a lot of fighting in the group. I worked on bond bank in 2001 in the county. And current bond issued in 2010 bonds, we were a bond underwriter and part of that group, that underwrote that issue. So I'll go through quickly kind of who we are, and then get into the numbers and some of the savings opportunities that we saw in the county. There's a couple of different ways you can go about doing this, and we'll go through those scenarios. Obviously, I haven't been going through this, I'm not going to go page by page, but if you interrupt with any questions, obviously at the end as well. We solely deal with municipal bonds, so our group is not doing corporate bonds, we're not doing stocks, CDs, et cetera. We're doing municipal bonds for counties, villages, cities, school districts, and the state of Illinois. Been around since 1984, I've been with the firm since 1998, Kevin's been in the business now, it was 2007 ago. So page four, these are the bond directors looking at refinancing, the ones on the left. So there is a Series 2010A recovery zone bonds, we're not looking to refinance those funds. You may recall that both of these bond issues are issued taxable, and the county receives a subsidy. And that subsidy kind of offsets the taxable rate, it makes it basically tax exempt. Recovery zone bonds, you get a allowance of 42%. Those American bonds, you're supposed to get 35%, you're getting about 32% subsidy. So basically, the federal government's covering 32% of your interest payment on those bonds. So the bond issue we're looking at is just to build America bonds, because you're not getting as much of the subsidy on that. Recovery zones, with that subsidy payment, current, the current market, it doesn't really make sense to refinance those. Uh, just pages six and seven, highlighting our rankings. We've obviously got some history here in the county, as well with bank qualified issues in the state of Illinois. Typically ranked third or second, back about the last 15 years, the number of issues in Illinois that we underwrite on a bank qualified basis, with property and sort of things. County issues are the most active underwriters for Illinois counties in the state, we're quite known county bond issues in the state of Illinois. And then page 89 are just some examples, tombstones per se, issues we've underwritten for counties in Illinois. Laying out the name of the county, the size of the issue, where most bonds were issued. Have you ever been in some of the other issuers here in the county that we've worked with?
Sure, so page 89 again is just an outline of some of the counties we've worked with through the state. Bernardi Securities is also underwrote bonds locally for Cradordred School District, Harren School District, City of Carterville, City of Harren. We've also worked with, I believe, Lake Egypt Water District, and Johnston City School District just up the road. Those are all additional clients of ours and folks that we've worked with over the years that we just didn't fit on the pages here. Also Union County, we've done some work with them next door. And also were in conversations with them currently about doing the exact same thing, looking at taking out some old Build America bonds and replacing those with a new financing, and we'll give you some of the details to recall here. Then I personally, I personally have also worked with Massac County, I've also worked with your local airport authority here on their terminal project, as well as their Williamson County Fire Protection District, so those are a few other folks in the area that I've worked with. So collectively, we've got a lot of experience working with many units of government here in the surrounding area, including Franklin County, just obviously up the road here, something I've also worked with in the past. So good references.
Uh, page 10, just our scope of our services real quick. We've got a quarterback's bond issue, we obviously attend any meetings, help you with restructuring of the refinancing bonds. Most important part, or two most important parts are actually marketing those bonds to investors, as well as going through the credit rating process, we've got a strong credit rating, we want to maintain that rating. We help, help you go through that process as well, we talk to your credit rating, it's about everything, so. You know, the questions that they ask when we prep the county, go through that process. Compared to marketing the bond, I mean, we're, we're trying to sell bonds here locally first, local banks, local individuals here in the county, kind of start here first, work on me out, typically get you a better rate. They're not going to purchase all the rounds, they're just a little short of maturity, that's where we start, and it gives us a, a good benchmark and what we're going to start to illustrate that, and then work out to more, more surrounding areas here in Illinois as well as nationwide.
Just, just to interject there, we also work with your office, Amanda, to make sure that the proper documents are filed and so forth. Also work with you annually in terms of making sure that any underlying tax levies associated with an alternate revenue bond issue are properly abated. Just want to help make sure that, you know, no ball is getting vertically dropped in that regard too. So service isn't just tied to one specific financing, we would also look to try to maintain a relationship moving forward, as it relates to ongoing service, to help with some of the documents and stuff that flow through your office.
Uh, page 14 is kind of the last page I want to go through before we get to the first. Your continuum exposure obligations, this is a website, the demo website, I'm not sure. If anybody can pull up this website, you're the investors of your bond or any bond issue, they type in Williamson County, it'll pull up the official stating from the bonds, basically the prospectus, it'll show the interest rates of the issue, the issues outstanding, and importantly, it'll show your financial profile, so your audit of financials and some other demographic information. Currently, I believe your treasurer is uploading this, but we provide that service as well, we don't charge anything for it, but it's an important part of the bond market today for investors, they want, they want to make sure that things are being done correctly to the county's condition. Obviously, the word is transparency, so transparency is uploaded, uploaded directly to the file. That's the buzzword. How we price bonds, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but it's important, actually, we turn to page 16, this is important, you'll see. We issue bonds for the city of Old Fallon, they have a double A plus rating, with the county's rating double A minus, so very similar. You'll see there's five bond issues that were priced. That first count, underwritten Bernardi Securities, the city of Old Fallon, nine point four million. There's this triple eight MMD, that's basically the S and P 500 for insurance, that changes everything, that's that first count. What we're doing is we're pegging the yield that we price the bonds at to that index, and that spread is in that double column. So the lower the spread, the better, the closer we are to that index. Can't compare it to all the other issues because they're not all priced on the same day, so rates go up and down hourly. But what we can do is this index just changes day by day, we can peg it to that. Important to see here, it's only about 24% of those bonds just there in the city of Old Fallon. And you'll see some of those shorter maturities, we, we really outperform some of our competition on those other similar issues because those first 10 years or so were all placed with local banks. So that just goes back to my point of trying to sell bonds locally, typically results in a better interest rate.
You said most, most are on the local level are banks taking.
Usually banks that are buying the bigger blocks, but we sell them to.
We, we did this, we went to local. I said through all that, my, my, give them an opportunity.
We give them a day or two just to put through all the documents and come back to us on their interest. Obviously, they come back and they want an extremely higher rate than our market is, let me crush that down, but typically. Uh, jumping into the rates, page 18. You see, this is a 20-year interest rate, it changes weekly. This is a 10-year recap, so this goes back to 2009. Bonds we're looking at refinancing were issued in 2010. You can see where rates were here at the end of 2010 compared to where they are today. Really, that's why we're here, the rates are much lower than they were back in 2010. They're coming up on a call feature for your current bond issue, the rate being lower, potentially refining this opportunity. And page 19 is that same graph, just to give you more of a context, just look back four years, back 1979, where does that rate come from? So we're still here all time low in the interest rate environment. Couple of the graphs, I would have you to move on to here. Page 20, this blue graph says yield curve analysis, that's where your current interest rates are at current bonds. That red graph, we can lock in the rates today, that's where those interest rates are. So that starts in here, 2019, 2020, goes all the way to maturity, 2037. So you'll see that's where that gap, that huge drop in interest rates have occurred. So what I showed you on the previous page is just kind of outline that 20-year gap. But here, going through the whole maturity of your bond issue, you'll see that large gap, huge drop in rates. So, I don't know, won't you be able to, the bonds that we're actually looking at refinancing, the interest rate, call feature?
Page 21, 22 is a summary, snapshot of the current bonds that are already in place. Page 21 is principal bond, principal outstanding only, so if you're looking at page 21, as mentioned earlier, you've got two, two issues really outstanding. All done at the same time back in 2010, you've got the recovery zone economic development bonds. Remember, those are the ones that are getting the higher subsidy from the government, about 42%. And so those are going to be paying off in years 37 through 40, leave those alone. Again, there's no real economic gain to be realized by doing anything with those. The net interest rate of the subsidy is 3.75%. Then, of course, you've got the Build America bonds, they're principal outstanding, 19, year 36, with that 4.33%. So that's what we're essentially comparing things, comparing things to. Makes sense when the bonds, bonds were structured to put the lower rate on the longer end, push the doubt, push the lower rate out there as far as you possibly could. Page 22 factors in the interest component to each of these bond issues, along with the subsidy that is being provided for by the federal government. And so you can see there, you've got the 2010A recovery zone bonds, along with the 2010B bond issues, is bond issue that's outstanding as well, the Build America bonds. So as we look at these, and what we're comparing to is the, what's a new principal and interest schedule look like compared to your current principal and interest schedule with the subsidy? Because we have to obviously compare the subsidy that you're receiving, so it's a net to net comparison. Call dates 2020 on both of these, December 1st, 2020, we'll talk more about that here in a little bit. 2023, this is just a snapshot of the county's debt margin, we're not going to go over this, we're not talking about any new money projects or any new money financing, so not a whole lot of need to pour over page 23, but suffice to say, you've got about a $30 million, give or take, legal debt margin. Page 24 shows a range of rates. At this point, what we're wanting to do is just give you a hypothetical illustration. Oftentimes, one of the biggest questions we get is as well, I mean, what are rates at today? And so what we've got here is this box of hypothetical interest rates in various tranches, unrated bonds, A-rated bonds, and then the double A category. Again, Williamson County here is double A minus, so we're looking at that far right tranche of, of rates that are so, you would expect on a tax exempt financing, going out from year one all the way out to year 20, that range of rates that you see on the right-hand side. Okay, a little tough to pinpoint exactly where it's going to be today, we're not in the market, but that should. the market, but that should give you a decent idea as to what a scale would look like if we were in the market today. And that's all subject to change, but if we're in the market today, that's where we would reasonably expect, uh, the range of rates to fall in. So now what we're going to do is get into, uh, the reason why we're here, and that's to just present, uh, information, uh, and open discussion on, uh, an opportunity that we see on our end that you may be, uh, able to consider. So starting on page 25 here, this shows that if we were to wait until next fall, so basically fall of 2020, as those bonds are approaching the predetermined call date of December 1st, 2020, if all else holds, if all else equal, everything holds between today, and we fast forward till fall of 2020, what would some potential savings look like to the county? Left-hand side shows what we looked at a couple pages ago, is the left-hand side, this left box here shows your current amortization schedule. Okay, so we did absolutely nothing. Here's of course what your total debt service payments would be over the next, uh, several years. Again, that does factor in that 32% federal subsidy, so you've got your net debt service on your existing financing over there. And again, that's a net interest response of about 4.33%. Okay, right-hand side shows after the hypothetical refinances. Okay, again, we're using a range, so going back to that previous page where we showed that range of, uh, what a double A tranche would look like, you can see that, all again, all else equal, issuing bonds, tax exempt, taking the, taking the tax exempt at a lower rate, taking those proceeds, paying off the old bonds that are currently outstanding, you can see what the range of savings would be, about 900 grand, maybe one and a quarter million, give or take.
That's about 55,000 to 70,000 per year. Not changing the term of the bonds.
Right, not increasing, you had the same.
Right. Basically lowering that rate from 4.33%, anywhere from about 3.41 to 3.54%, which is the actual rate.
This would eliminate the, this does of course eliminate the federal subsidy that you're, uh, that you're receiving every year. Okay, so the, the federal subsidy component goes away. Okay, federal subsidy goes away.
We're including already.
Right, that's, yeah, right. It's already factored in here, that's net to net.
So here, call, those bonds were issued tax exempt, high rate, and then taking into the subsidy, so the net rate that you're paying after you take into account the subsidy would be, but when you account the subsidy, it's about six and a half percent. But then you pull back the subsidy, you have about 4.33%. So really what you're comparing, that's the net equivalent tax exempt rate, 4.33% compared to where we are today. That's all taken into account.
And as Bob mentioned, uh, another question we get oftentimes is, right, so we're not increasing the annual payment? Well, no, we wouldn't be here if that's what we're talking about. You're not increasing the payoff date or lengthening the payoff date? No, we wouldn't be here if that's what we're talking about. Not changing really any significant terms in terms of when the payments are made? No, we're not talking about that either. So when you're talking about moving forward with the potential restructuring of a financing, uh, of a bond issue like this, there are no more, uh, you may remember back in 2010, you had to go through a 30-day petition period, there were several documents, public hearings, things of that nature, since we're not talking about generating new money, and we're not, and we're not changing the footprint of the original deal, then there are no 30-day petition periods, no publication requirements, no public hearing notices that are, that are required. Just one resolution.
Wouldn't you all, you're involved, I talked to somebody in our security background, we did them all, I suppose, one of you guys. We, we shop, we shop different people.
One of the underwriters I've been asking, I think you had four or five underwriters back.
Here, here's my, here's my take, one person, this, this all looks great on paper, but this was the most complex thing I've ever sat through in my entire life. I'm not, I'm not what you do, I, I don't know, all this stuff, it's not my job. But when we worked our ass off to get to the position where we could take advantage of the, at the present time, Obama's, President Obama's, uh, stimulus money, we were, we were ready to dig darts exactly when that all came out, it was planned, purpose, on purpose. We went through all this rigmarole and went out and did everything perfectly, and these numbers look great, but to take chances on something that we worked our tail up on to go, to take chance on, well, you know, what it might be in 2020 or what it might be in 2019 is a, to me, is a real risk to taxpayers, but we know what we've got right now. And that's, we're getting serious money from the federal government for 30 years, guaranteed, okay? So it's, it, it, you're not the only one who spoke to me about this, since, since ever. I, I hear this stuff, it all sounds good, and a lot of it goes over our head, I'm sure, because it's not our business, but it scares me to think that all this work went in and screw up one thing, of what we're getting from the stimulus money, over a whim of what might be, and screw all it up, taxpayers will pay even more. And we built this jail because we planned it correctly, set money back, and we had absolutely zero, and I do mean zero, new taxes to the, to the people here in this county. This is risky. This all looks great, but it's risky when you know what you got and you're locked in on what you got.
Well, and.
And that's my take, I was, you know, the only company has asked me in the last year about stuff's coming up and the bads and this stuff, I get it, but I sit through painful times, but to me, just to say this is going to be much better is, to me, uh, I, I don't know about all this, so.
A, a very simple response to that, but you don't want to prove anything that doesn't show savings.
Showing savings is great.
Right.
But messing up something on the back end is devastating. So I, I'm just saying, it looks great, but us three have a, we've got a budget process coming up and we will address it when we.
Yeah, well, you did most of the legwork, but it was done. The refinancing's an easy part, it's there and you're saving money or not, if you're not saving money, you're not, you're not selling bonds.
Flipside is that the community's got, the county's got an opportunity to save money, that taxpayers ought to probably know about that as well.
Possibly.
So certainly wouldn't look to increase anything, that would be a mistake.
Possibly.
Typically what's done on that resolution that you pass, you did, put in there a minimum savings to decide what that, that savings is, no bonds are issued until you've authorized that. We can't come back with that dollar amount, there's nothing to be done. So the risk there is, we're doing all the legwork until we get to the point where we issue a bond, so you say, okay, here's the savings, this, then we go through the credit rating process, that's the only thing we really need help with, which we assist you with, you just need somebody up front from the county, uh, in that regard, but other than that, we're going to put everything together, you're authorizing where you want the savings to be, we'll monitor that, give you updates, and get that target, let you know and say, proceed or don't proceed. But once we sell bonds, that rate is locked in, so the risk then is gone. Once you're locked in and fixed in that new rate, just like you have here, your, your payments aren't changing, when you issue new bonds, you're issuing fixed rate bonds, so there's no adjustment in rates five years from now on, but once you see that number, once we finalize those bonds, that savings number will be locked in. So then there is no risk to the tax portion. And you're showing, we're showing that, that savings is less than currently what you're paying now. And, uh, I have been doing this since 1998, fairly rarely ever see a bond issue go to mature. Typically, they refinance once or twice throughout that 20, 25-year period, this is your first opportunity. So with the way rates are today compared to where they were in 2010, that's why we're showing you these numbers. I know it looks like it's too good to be true, but it really is what you're locking in today, that is what that savings number will be. But there is one more scenario we want to show you, you don't have to wait until 2020. I want to go through page 26.
So page 26 is what if you move forward a little bit later on this year? So again, the first one, uh, I get, great, it's all fine and good, guys, but we've got six or a year and a half, and wait to lock it in, thing's subject to change and most likely will change between now and then, get it? Page 26 shows an opportunity to, uh, pull the trigger a little sooner than 2020, so fall of this year, so essentially receiving one more subsidy payment, a little bit later on this year in December, and then locking in a new set of rates in December of this year. And what does that do? Well, it's going to reduce the savings amount, as you can see there, to about 450 to 750,000 dollars. Again, that's because we're taking advantage one year sooner than what the, uh, 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 current call date is, December 1st of 2020, but it's an opportunity to at least lock in and try to get some savings. We ran a break, it's not in here, uh, we ran a breakeven analysis, some folks will say, okay, well, that's great, we can lock this in later this year, how much would rates have to go up between now and next fall to equal the number shown on the previous page? And it's about 30, about 36 basis points, so just a little over a quarter of a percent. So that's really the, kind of the window that we're looking at here. Okay, so again, have an opportunity a little bit later on this year, we don't want to take the subsidy away quite yet, we have an opportunity to issue tax exempt bonds this year, get one more subsidy payment, lock something in later this fall, have some savings in hand, but again, that breakeven point, if things don't change at all, is about 36 basis points, so again, a little over a quarter percent. That's how much you'd have to move to make it a wash.
So rates went up 50 basis points between now and next year, next fall, you're actually, it makes sense to refinance the bonds this year. And interest rates have moved about 40 basis points since December, so they do jump that amount. Uh, it would be something, you'd want to get an underwriter on board to monitor that, probably wouldn't want to wait, but if the underwriters start seeing interest rates go up, say, hey, you may want to lock this in, we're seeing rates go in the wrong direction. If you don't want to wait until 2020, interest rates go up 50, 100 basis points, all the savings.
And it's only locked in at your, at your direction, because when we come back and say, here's what we're seeing, here's where the savings is at, yes or no? So that's just page 26. 27 is just a hypothetical, uh, timeline in terms of what steps are involved in processing, and a lot of the back office work is done on our end, partnering with bond council, of course, any documents approved by state attorney's office to use with them as well.
Yeah, there's one, one more to action in regards to that resolution, going through those roles or steps. The other thing that was complicated back in 2010 is because there was the recovery zone money that you were using, the Build America bonds, there was a few issues on that.
Preventing wage type stuff, I mean, all that kind of stuff.
Had to show already all that.
Mud, muddy the water a little bit.
Now we're refinancing this stuff for sure.
Really should just be, uh, here's what we're paying, here's what we know we're going to pay with the federal government subsidy for the next 20 years, here's what we can get done today, or at whatever that time is, whether it's a little bit later on this fall or, or next year. A minus, A minus B equals C, if that makes sense to them.
So we may be a C by then.
What's that?
We may be a C rating by then.
Yeah, let's hope not.
The old states.
Let's, let's hope not.
Well, how has that affected, because the state right now, uh, they've already been put on notice that, uh, the budget that appears to be being brought forward is going to send us to junk bond status if they pass everything the way it is, so how does that affect us?
The county being sent to junk bond status or the state of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Okay.
The budget that the state of Illinois is proposing is terribly out of whack.
That's no different than a lot of the prior years budgets that have been passed, or even the timeframe when there wasn't a budget.
But they're looking to put a holiday, they've literally been told, they're, Renter, Pritchard's looking to put a holiday, what they call, they're not going to fund the pensions the way they're supposed to, and they've already been told by the credit bureaus that if you do that, we're going to degrade you again, or we're one notch above junk bond status now. So that would put us in, into that ring as a state.
As a state.
How does that affect us?
It affects, I mean, it trickles down.
Oh, I know it does, because right now, we're paying, if anything that we do, we're paying a quarter point more just because we're in Illinois.
That's correct, and you paid the same thing in 2010 on the bond issue as well, you had your Illinois penalty effect there as well, you paid in 2010.
I'll see, recall, a couple of years ago, we approached you with the savings opportunity, the Illinois penalty was extremely high, 10,000, didn't happen, uh, it was even worse light than they did pass the income tax, that increased, the credit rating agencies took their negative outlooks, at least off the state, didn't increase the ratings, but they took the negative outlooks, which was big in the investment, from the investment side, depending on what happens here when the budget's pulling forward, like you've mentioned, you know, depending what the credit agencies say about that and what actually gets passed, you know, it'll trip you down as well, do it or not.
Now, they're not, they're not, to say that they're not happy is a gross understatement.
Absolutely, I don't understand.
And the investors, I mean, that's our job, we're selling the bonds, that's, the investors want to know how tight are you to Illinois? How, uh, you know, what effect, if Illinois does this or that, what effect does that have on the county? That's our responsibility to explain to them, yeah. We all know what Illinois is, but this is why the county's credit rating is what it is, and this is why we feel the county's credit rating is strong. Um, I mean, a lot of your, a lot of your revenues are coming in from property taxes, you have strong tax base, uh, at least from that standpoint, your levels and some of the other things.
Most statements take their portion of that too.
Right.
At the same time, you're not double A minus because of the state of Illinois, and because of one of the things they've done, so I think that's a important takeaway too.
Why are we double A minus?
Because of what, there's a lot of what decisions have been made here locally in terms of healthy revenue streams, fund balances, economic tax base, the area's growing. When I first started here, I remember coming down here 12 years ago, there wasn't half the stuff in Marion that there is now. That's a good part of it.
We're, you know, they look at this, we're the only county, uh, in the southern third of the state, you got to go to St. Clair and Madison, uh, Madison counties to have, uh, a tax base of over a billion dollars.
That's exactly right. When I worked in the airport, billion dollar tax base.
You know, whenever, I, it was, uh, Kim Meyer, I don't know, Ron, you make that into that, I don't know. We were talking to these, you know, we were doing the bond situation, we talked to the rating people.
Right.
And they said, you know, man, we're not experienced accounting, this covered as well for every direction, because we, we, he was on board, if we set back $200,000 a year for years, and then when the stimulus money kicked in, the 400 plus thousand, we get, they said, you are covered to pay for this, you know, all different directions, and we're not used to that. I think we may have been, I think we were an A minus then, I don't think we were an A plus.
We're never.
We're never going to be an A plus.
We, we were an A minus then because we weren't, you have a, uh, minus, then you have double A, and then you have double A plus, so we're.
Well, 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 we were just, what, what?
Double A.
Double A minus, yeah. What, what, what really got me is that we really worked up on how to pay for it, in many ways.
Right.
In time.
And, and, and still, I mean, and, and so what, what the rating agencies do is they'll, they'll, they'll vary, every two or three years, they'll do a surveillance, you may not necessarily know they're doing it, because they may not even pick up a phone calling you, but they're reviewing your audits, they're looking at your budgets, they're out there because it's all out there. So they are looking at you, it's not like they haven't, they've just forgotten about you since 2010. So they're actually, they're actually looking at you, reviewing it, and they're clearly seeing things that still, you know, make your mouth water because they're maintaining the same rate.
You get away with it, they make your mouth water.
And, and so again, my standpoint is, is, state of Illinois can't take a whole lot of credit for you guys being a double A minus. So can, can, can they impact you from going, you know, maybe backside? Yeah, I suppose it could, but I'd hang my hat off.
They keep straight money away from us, they're going to.
You're not, you're not going to be left with many choices, right? Yeah, I mean, you're, you're.
It's like a percentage here, percentage there, percentage here, not in minimal ways, and it's all just, it's going to be ugly probably this year, I'd say, so.
Um, if we say, go, go ahead and go forward, all we're doing is saying, just get some hard numbers that we can, we can make an exact decision on whether we want to really pull the trigger or not.
Correct. Yeah, you'd want to get an underwriter, like us on board, just to monitor it, and then we would just do our work on our end, and then we would keep you updated and say, here's, you know, you're discussing turn of where you're comfortable with on a savings number, um, that you could pull that trigger beginning really here this fall, anywhere until the call.
What I don't understand and, uh, is the difference between pages 24 and 25 and 26, I don't understand how if you wait until 20, that you're actually going to whip a saving over the life of this, half a million dollars more than if you go soon, that, I don't understand that.
Well, there's two things there, we're keeping that subsidy outstanding for another year until the call, that's about 300. The other part is, first, refunding the bonds in year in advance, you still can't call those bonds in until 2020. So what's happening is you're taking the proceeds from a new bond issue, that's set aside in an escrow, you know, it was invested in treasuries, treasuries are earning maybe 2% on a one-year treasury, and then you're still having to pay the 4.33% for that additional here, what we call a box, you got to put more money aside in the escrow to fund that additional interest.
And we're not getting that second.
Sub, sub, sub.
Okay.
So that's, those two things combined are why the savings is lower than. So that's, those two things combined are why the savings is lower than, but the question there is, if interest rates go up, then you could be in a worse position if you did pull the trigger.
You're rolling the dice. And that, we're getting, right, that's exactly right, you're rolling the dice, so we're not here to say, we'll do this for this.
You don't have to wait until September, this time next year, we see interest rates going up.
But if we just, if we have a look at it, the worst thing that can happen is we choose not to do anything. It doesn't hurt to take a hard look.
Well, what it's going to require is another important meeting to discuss everything.
Once they do their own work.
This is just a proposal.
Correct.
And so it would take a little more depth, we can't do anything today.
And, and as people see this coming, you're going to have more companies approaches, or I've been both of them, aren't you? It's just going to be a, so, so. Okay, so what do you guys think? Take a, and we'll go ahead and take a hard look at it?
Right now, I, I, I don't want to make a emotional.
This is too much.
This is too much to, right now, to make a decision.
You need more people than us involved in this to talk about it.
Yeah. I, like, partly, like what Brent said, uh, you know, a little bit, other entities as well. I just think it's going to take another meeting to discuss this, maybe, maybe, uh, at that time, if we want to re-invite them back to the meeting, or something, a special meeting to discuss it a little more in depth.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's not something you jump into.
It's just, it's just. Appreciate it. No problem, Keith, we'll keep this, we got everything we need right here.
Contact information on very last page.
Guys, appreciate your opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for listening, we know it's a lot to digest.
Kind of make your brain, brain dead after hearing it.
Yeah, it does, it does, it does. There's a lot of moving parts.
If I had to do this all day, I'd be slicing my wrists if I had to do it.
That's why you don't, that's why you don't do it.
That's why I don't.
Your dial-up phone.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah, Mike, uh, here's, I'll give you a guess.
You're, you're out of.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-something Clark.
You were meeting with Carbondale last night, right?
Uh, Jackson County. Jackson, Carbondale was morning.
Yeah, City Carbondale, so Jackson County.
Do you do, you do any Marion, or?
We've done some city work there, goes back many, many years, we've done some city work there.
All right, very good. Devin, Robert, appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody, on that, we'll stay in touch as well, thank you.
Be psyched, Rob.
Okay, forget it.
We done, so, do I do the camera?
No, we still got, uh, we're back up to the water board appointments. Uh, we have, uh, the, uh, terms for John Geiger and Stephen Lay, uh, are up for the Devil Kitchen Water District, and they've expressed interest in remaining on that board.
Um, I got a question, have you checked in with them and your reg, your regulators with the Devil Kitchen Board?
I have not, uh, that's something that we, I feel we need to do that as a group. I would talk to Wendy about that.
So, fine.
So, uh.
Bring up the speed, Brad, I think we got, they have a board member that's also an employee on the Devil Kitchen Water Board.
Which is not the way it's.
I don't like that.
And it's, uh.
They're paying, they're paying employee.
And, uh, yeah.
The fee.
On the Devil's Kitchen Water Board? On the Devil's Kitchen, okay.
He's an employee of the.
I believe Mr. Mr. Pizzoni is, is his.
What's his name?
Pizzoni.
Okay.
And, uh, he is an employee, I don't know if he's full-time or part-time, but, uh.
Fact, he's an employee.
But he's an employee, and he's on, sits on the board as well. And, uh, both Ron and I have spoke to Wendy about it, uh, don't know where that stands, I don't know maybe what we need to do here. I mean, this is about the only thing that we can do, uh, maybe, I would propose bringing, I don't know if this would make any difference or not, do we want to bring this guy in, talk to him? Or what, I mean, now, Pizzoni's term isn't up for a while. So I, I, I don't know, I don't know.
I'm going, I'm going to hit back, see, I'm going, I'm going to give you an example, almost identical. Uh, two weeks ago, I had a call from a person that sits on the water board, and these water boards just keep popping up as issues, but just one in my opinion, not that that means anything. And he said, he has a, a, a guy that, that, actually, there's been two different calls in the last two, three months. A guy that sits on there, that's a lawn mowing guy, he's on the board, he also does the mowing, and gets a check. And he says, what appearance does that come across you? I said, I personally don't think it's a good appearance, because he's voting on himself in, in many ways. I, you do what you want, but I don't think it's a good idea. Second call was from another water board that said that their, one of their members has possibly temporarily made it full-time to move just outside the district. What would be my take on that? Said, I'd be getting a new board member. You know, I don't think it's fair, if you're in the village or in a, in a water board district that you've got senior whatever inherent or whatever, you guys by living in Carbondale, would make a whole lot of damn sense. And I said, but again, you do what you want, if it flares up and we think differently, then we'll do something properly. But there's a lot of these moving parts in these water boards that, and, and being an employee.
Well, being an employee versus like, say, the lawnmower guy, lawnmower guy might, you know.
Custodian.
Or he could, yeah, I mean, depending, he could always, uh, not vote on things affecting that, but when it's an employee, it's hard to remove yourself from.
But he's also on the board.
That's what I meant, yeah.
But he is, he is an employee.
Right, that, that's what I meant, I mean, it's going to be difficult, because every vote you're taking, for the most part, is going to have some kind of.
Financial.
Right.
Vote.
Versus maybe the guy that did vote, you see what I'm saying, where he could abstain on a vote regarding that.
And that's why you have the economic interest statements, because they need to fill that out, they're receiving money.
And the parents doesn't look good. Is it illegal? Probably not, but is it the parents? Probably stays.
What would be your recommendation on this? On the, on the employee?
No, on these two point ones, just for the, on the water district. I mean, knowing that there may be an issue, uh, there. Now, the issue may not be with this particular individual, but, uh, I know we have an issue, we don't, other than appointing board members, we really have very little control.
That's it. It's our job, that's it.
But, uh.
But these, these two in particular that we're talking about, though, just so I'm clear, there's no, there's no specific issue with these two individuals, right?
Uh, these aren't the ones that are.
Okay.
Third question.
Okay.
The only question with was, uh, Pizzoni.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I believe that's, it was a question.
That's it.
And I, I think his term is enough for another two, three years.
And when you, when he was, uh, put on, was he already an employee, then are people going to play at?
I wasn't aware of that, at that time.
Yeah. So as far as today, though, um, we're, we're just dealing with these two, right?
Yeah. Their, their, their appointments have expired.
I mean, I mean, the only thing I could see us doing is maybe set up a meeting with, and then bring the whole water board in, in to discuss this or whatever, I don't know.
Who's the chairman of the, who's the chairman of this?
Nancy, it says.
I'd bring that person, you come in to a water board.
But he's the secretary.
I'd bring in maybe one person.
Who did, how did this come to your attention on the Pizzoni?
I had a, uh, an individual, a registered citizen. A citizen at, at the district.
I got a call too. That's what you get into, that's like the other support, I'm not telling them what to do, because it's not my job to want to do. We disappoint, that's it, but if you open up a can of worms, we start having employees on the board, or a guy living outside the district.
That's why I'm asking, are legal.
Yeah, I, I, some parents, I don't know.
Well, and you said, I mean, as far as, we don't, we don't have any issue with these two at this time, but when that comes up, I mean, it's something probably going to want to address maybe even earlier, I mean, because eventually, if he's going to be wanting to be put back on there, but I don't know, I think we'd like to look into it a little bit further as well.
I say, I say table it, personally, I'm not, I'm telling you.
Table these appointment?
Or the ones that's issued, this is not the issue, these here, right?
If you table it, then you get to the point where do they have enough people to be.
Well, they don't, exactly, so.
Well, it continues until they replace, it'll continue on, so I can get a board.
Okay, I think this basically falls in, into your department.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, will you check into it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's, I guess.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, it will, it will continue on the board until there is a, should like, if other county board act expired, it would.
I just didn't know what direction to go. I know we talked to Wendy, but I don't know if anything has been done, I don't know if she's had time to look into it or.
I'll check and see what progress she has, and if she's back, and we'll, we'll, one way or another, we'll come up with some kind of answer, so.
For this, for the.
So, so we can go ahead and then appoint these two here?
That was my point, I don't see any issue with that.
Not the thing.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, go ahead, who, who wants to, can we do it? Uh, make a motion, do, do we do two, do we do two at a time, I guess we can't.
You can do both.
Yeah, okay, make a motion to the Devil Kitchen Water District, two members that have five-year terms, that we have in April, John Geiger and Stephen Lay, both want to stay on the board, so I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint John Geiger, Stephen Lay, appointed a five-year term, depending on May one, two thousand nineteen, to expiration of people thirty to twenty-four, and resolution number is nineteen oh four oh nine two nine.
That's it, that's the best I can do.
Jim Morley?
Yeah.
For Gentry?
Yeah.
Ron Ellis?
Yeah.
And we got a second one, the Williams County Fire Protection District.
Steve Land is finally retiring, and Tracy Emery is, uh, willing to step on and be, become part of that board.
So apparently, what we're wanting to do here is, they actually exist on the, those residences, Steve Land, and they would like to appoint, was it Tracy, or is it your girl boy? Tracy Emery, and resolution is nineteen oh four oh nine thirty.
Uh, Steve, Steve Land's term, okay, so he, his ends on April.
Right, he's already, he's. He doesn't end this month.
Okay, so he, he's just, you know, that's a bit. I'll second you.
Jim Morley?
Yeah. Yeah, let me take that. That way, exactly.
Okay, so, really, unless you guys have something else.
We need the camera.
Oh, yeah, we got, yeah, we go back up to the, we only got one bid, right?
One bid.
I thought we had a bunch of people each bid.
Well, remember, when you, when you narrow the scope down, it eliminates a lot of them, who could actually qualify.
We had sixty. We had sixty people.
But they didn't put pre-qualification on.
That's, that's why it's a nightmare. You can't just have some body of your brother up there making sixty. It's a digital company, and it's, uh.
I was surprised you only got one bid.
I thought there'd be that type of, uh.
Who was the one that bid?
Who was the one that bid there?
The one that put it in, so, I, I thought Indiana would bid on.
Did they keep over and looked at it?
Sure is, yeah. And that, that's, uh. It's just like a joke.
See, Christmas.
When we say.
It's going to be this big.
No, I'm not, I'm getting presents.
When we say sealed bids, we mean sealed, we mean sealed bids.
Never been hoping before, armetically sealed, and amazing.
This is, this is accurate, this is, this is.
So this bid is coming from Accurate, Accurate Controls, and the bid amount is.
Uh, I guess three.
Sure.
So the miss.
Did you fill in the numbers yourself?
This bid total is equal to two hundred ninety-eight thousand and nine hundred and sixty-four dollars, is that, do you have a thinking that?
Yeah, two ninety-eight, nine sixty-four, forty-four. At one and a quarter percent, uh, if a performance bond is required.
Five percent down.
Yep, that's what it said on these things.
How long is that project going to take?
Uh, question. All work would be done Monday, Monday through Friday from seven to four thirty.
Is it four? How long does the bid?
I don't like the, I don't think it's going to work.
How long is the bid due?
Usually thirty days. I guarantee you they'll work for one year.
Sixty days.
Quotation valid for sixty days, subject to change thereafter.
What's that alternate, on that, top of that page, it says alternate total, you see that, it's got a different amount, on the page where you just saw sixty days? No, flip over.
Now, that's sixty days from the day that we open it?
Um.
Yes.
Sixty days from when we open it.
If you go, that page was only sixty days.
The book be printed.
This is a alternate total, this is. This is a copy of that. Supposed to be, this is a bid copy. Are you still in section one?
Yeah. The bid we had there shows two ninety-eight, nine sixty-four.
This is the last page for section two. So what's that total mean?
Oh, it's alternate, it's an alternate bid for a different scope. It's, it's for not as much work.
Right.
Okay.
The base, the bill, the, here's the work, here's everything that they're working at. For the first, start on page three, page two, that's all the work that they would do for the two ninety-eight thousand. If we, if we thought that was too much, just, that's to do the Cadillac, the two ninety-eight is the Cadillac, and to get just what we need to do stripped down is a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
So what are you going to have to do with bid on, what you're going to accept?
No, we, what we need to do is look at this, I'd say we look at this first.
Okay, so you don't, so you're going to table it?
I say, I say we look at it, and we meet with Scott, and then we see what they, exactly. I was thinking like one forty, one sixty, around is what I was, that I'm.
Well, Scott told me it was going to be a two ninety, two ninety period.
Well, yeah, we don't want to start off, of course. The question is, can you do some of it now, and then some of it next year, and that, you know?
Well, if that would change the bid. Because this is only a bid for sixty days.
So I said, that was it.
Yep. That's exactly what it is. Exactly.
Zachary.
But they got all kinds of.
Zachary.
So what we need to do is, we need to immediately get this to Scott, and then, because the clock starts ticking today on sixty days.
So you want copies sent to Scott?
Oh, sorry, bud. Uh, yeah, Scott?
I'd like a copy.
Yeah, we.
I figure the three of you guys are going to want copies, copy to Scott.
Who else?
And probably Cher.
Um.
Darren.
Darren, Darren would need one.
I'm just here to push in. I'm just here to push in. So we'll probably make about three copies for them over there.
Yeah.
Does Wendy need a copy? All standard.
I would say. Wouldn't hurt.
All right. I'll send it, send it to Wendy also. Three to the Sheriff's Office.
Actually, it wouldn't hurt to have another copy for, uh, Devil's BBC.
I want a copy of this.
Why? Give it to him. Listen to her. Anything anymore, just for. Then you guys, so you're gonna table it for now and then you're gonna wanna set up a meeting to discuss it with everybody.
Right.
And then would I put both amounts in here for the bid amount since I did two?
It probably wouldn't hurt have the, uh, for all, for.
Base one and the alternate one.
Well, yeah, you'd have the base, the options, option, the, is, uh, the first option is to have everything. The Cadillac. The second was the alter, the cut-down alternate, alternate. Alternate bid number one was. It was about half.
You know?
Um.
Okay, I, I, we got that, that all thinker of. I want to touch just a second. I'm sorry. It, it's Jeff Shupe, that we worked with at the beginning. Jeff got, has now worked here, but he called us six months ago. He wanted to watch what's going on in the market. To me, loyalty means a lot, you know, loyalty is a lot. I mean, these guys would come around with that, want to take it all away and tell me that's the stimulus money. I would agree with that if that was up. Uh, that's, that's very, I would agree with his opinion. And Kim's a good player, you know, she really loves him and, uh. It's all great. Sounds good on paper, but there's just two move, two big move parts. So I, see what Shupe's got to say on this. He does all Marion's. And Seth might come in and take it all away, all the work.
But you're not taking anything away. What you're looking at here is can we save, uh, half a million dollars? But if you're reducing the interest rate enough, even though you're taking the federal money away, you know, that effectively puts our interest rate at four point three-three percent. And if we can drop the interest rate a point quarter, then over the life of the remaining bottoms, you're looking at saving a minimum of a half a million dollars at a minimum. Even losing the subsidy, you're still saving money. So that's what Jeff needs to look at. I'd encourage you to have Jeff look at it.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if, uh.
He may say that's really harmful. He may work with people. He's not one of those kind of people. I don't know.
I'm sure he does.
I, that's what I told him whenever they spoke. Too much for my head. I'm off the.
Right now, I'm setting up a special meeting or entertaining. You know, if this is the route we want to, do wanna look at, uh, I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem with that and possibly, but let's just make sure, let's just make sure Jeff that Rogan knows what's going on here and see what he comes up with.
Talk to him.
So, wow, shit, something. I must send it to him. What are you doing about it? I talked to him. Oh, you could explain it. So.
That's the bottom line is, the way I looked at this was, if it's possible, and I knew we weren't gonna vote on anything today, and I told them that, they knew that coming into this. This was a fact finding mission, but if we could save, uh, six hundred thousand to a million dollars, we'd be fools not to look at it.
And, and the other reason why I say you're talking dead, you know, two big, mom's building, it's gonna square, it would pay taxes in most counties. To me. You know, man, he, he owns these big buildings down in the hills. So he, maybe let up north, he could build up.
So anything we can do to save money.
No, I agree on that. Yeah, I think it'll be great. But this two, this two.
I'm gonna go close to everybody, so.
Yes, and I'll leave somebody's, uh, minority to make it profitable, but we have a business or bottom.
Okay. And then we'll take a look maybe next week, uh, yeah, when everybody look at that and look and have a big meeting next week. That's, that's.
We can have a great big meeting on Wednesday when Stephanie comes back. How's that?
And I think she should not come back.
Oh, we give everybody a chance to look that over a little bit. And, uh, today is my Tuesday.
Yeah.
So I'll talk to, I'll talk to them and see what, what works out.
I'm gonna set up that, uh, committee through the subdivision ordinance. Bring here all fine, the inspectors board.
That was definitely said in that meeting.
That'd be, um, see, and you're gonna check, when Wendy gets back, we'll check with Wendy.
Well, I'll see what she, she usually keeps. I, I can get in and see what projects she has going. And according to the, the recommendations on that audit, we need to set up policies concerning, uh, timekeeping and stuff. So I guess if she hasn't worked on that already, she may be in the process of doing that. So we just make a check.
I'll check. She keeps her work in progress on a certain part where.
She's, I know she's been working on a variety of processes.
Well, this is, this is a major problem.
Uh.
I mean, on a scale of one to ten, we got a twenty.
But I do think it need to be brought out. Anyway, all right, well.
And then what really burned my tail end was when we were told that, literally told in the off, in, in the lobby even there, that, uh, everybody, everybody's expected to act like adults and keep track of their own. You can't do that. That is, oh, I was, I was flipping back when she said that.
Well, keep in mind, they're appointed and what goes on below them is controlled by the people above them. So that'll be taken care of. I gotta be talking about. Five years, so I have some questions. I don't think she's going in the right direction. So I'm just saying, I have to say you read this. I'm not going to detail this for you. I'm sure he knows. So.
Can you go?
So.
You gonna go?
No. Oh, yes, I am. Are you hoping to?
Sorry, I, I'm sorry. I should have crossed this up. So the, we have an old voting building in Haron.
Are you on the agenda, man?
I'm sorry, I'm not. But I'm not gonna have you vote on it. It's been written up. I have some pictures. I will forward you guys an email.
The one that we talked about.
Right. This is an old, um, polling place that we had over in Haron. The roof is falling in on it. See, Haron wants you guys to do something with it. It's still in the county's name. In the past, we had another one where, um, it was just deeded, well, it was deeded to the prop, people who lived right there.
It's a current polling place?
No, we don't use these old, it's an old block building. We used to have to get the porta potties.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Remember, this is on Oak Street.
Yeah.
Um, I think the guy who just bought the property.
Yes.
That's right there. It sits on an alley. It's not even a very big area. I think he's willing to take it on, to tear it down. Um, but that would mean we would need to get a deed and quitclaim into it.
I, I gave him all the, the information you gave me and the, the quitclaim.
He was one of the.
And he's supposed to get contact with you, get the process started.
Okay, so he is willing to write up a quitclaim.
And then, and then it's, that's on the tax rolls.
It's on, back on the tax.
Right.
We want to get a good partner.
And then, and then he can do whatever he wants with it.
I'll forward you the pictures of the building just so you kind of have an idea of what's going on. It's, it's about, it's got a stain and.
The old tree is growing a lot.
Yeah.
And, and, and the.
Absolutely. So he's gonna be getting in contact with me as soon as I know something, I'll let you guys know. We looked up how we did it in another one and we quitclaimed it to the property.
For Brad, for Brad.
And, uh, I told, and I told him, I said.
Come here again. I gotta tell you about my big deal. I gotta go over anyway. I got a question on something.
He's more happy to do that.
And then he's gonna tear it down, which is what the city parent wants. Cause it really is a nice work. And then we have one more of those buildings. It's out in Dykersburg.
I, I.
I guess until somebody has been wanting that.
I saw Chicago, so I, I hold on one second. We're right there. Okay, I'm making motion to the jury.
Yes.
Okay, make motion to the jury.
I'll second it.
Jim Morley?
Yeah.
Fringe entry?
Yeah.
Ron Ellis? Same. Yes. I think. I don't know if you guys can tell, but I'm.
You okay? You doing?
Trying to sign that with the monitor.
Yeah.
Am I gonna sign that or?
I don't know. Does everyone sign that or just what?
I thought we all.
They all do usually.
Yeah, we all, well, everybody gets to have a signature.
I can't see it. I'm saying.
All right, Devin. Have a good day.
You too.
Well, Devon's not signing yet.
World traveler?
Yeah.
In anywhere.
Get your, get your picture to, in Chicago, in the Wall Street Journal.
Oh, yeah, why didn't go there?
You went to Chicago.
Randy Lemon, who knows he was there before.
Springfield.
Was it Springfield?
Yeah.
Oh, he's probably gone.